To the August ninth, two thousand sixteen Board of Supervisors Special Meeting. We'll start with a moment of silent meditation followed by a pledge.
I am Mr. Lee O'Leary, Senator Barrack of the United States of America and the Republic for which this stands. My nation, my God, can be protected from their worst threats.
Uh, citizen by request, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. My name is Buddy Rhodes of Edward Strasburg Road, twenty-one seventy-six East Fall Field. One of the major things of... We've been talking about roads. And, uh, I think in the last meeting we budgeted one hundred and fifty thousand. He just said the guy came down, but it was one fifty-eight thousand long. We only had one person actually bid on it. I went around and checked with some other contractors. And of course, like he said, some of them were busy, some of them were not. But when you have just one bid, I also went around the township. And I requested, any of you supervisors in the last meeting, if you wanted to get around, I'd be glad to take you around. And I know Tag took one or two of yous around and showed you. The roads that need... Does need repaired is Montgomery Drive, which is marked at the beginning where one of the road employees live. It's all busted up. It's roughly about twenty... Twenty homes in that development. All right? West Morgan Drive, that's Ed Goldie's Drive. I'll give you a copy of these. Honeycomb Circle, that's over there in Durban, too. Needs new signs. Some of these signs, you can't even read them, they're faded. All right? We do, uh, replace signs. You know, if you can't see the sign, and if you're going around hunting for somebody and they live on, uh, Honeycomb Circle, you wouldn't be able to see the sign. It's all faded. All right? Perry Circle, it... It needs a sign. Beck Drive, which is right over here. You know, last year, I think, Tag did a lot of, uh, seal coating with the tire. He... He rented the machine and went around and did the road there. This is right across from the township. Rupi Road, that's when you're going back down Buck Run. All right? Like you're gonna go to the Unionville, past Layback's Old Bar. If anybody is familiar with that area. Rupi Road, House Nineteen, there's potholes there. All right? Longview Drive, Honeycomb... These here... There's equipment and trees on the right of way. I mean, somebody put down trees, trailers, everything right on the right of way. Okay? That's on Honeycomb Drive. This is all on Longview, uh, Drive. Matter of fact, I even had the phone number of the equipment to the guy. I don't know, he wants to sell, but he has big logs and trees out there. So if you're gonna snowplow, I don't know where you can put your snow. You know, if you have stuff on the right of way, you gotta push the snow off the... The road. I did mention, uh, in reference to, uh... Let me get the... Uh, Temple Cool Road, the discussion, I think the gentleman back home, he discussed that. It's roughly about ten to twelve homes down on Temple Cool Road. Uh, it was, uh, mentioned by Tag one time, eleven thousand. Same with Malibu Lane, which is in back of my development where Durban Church is. That was roughly estimate by Tag or somebody, eleven thousand. We had problems with property. You know, like Modena, I... I noticed where South Coastville came up there and tarred and chipped to the top of the hill. That's coming down through Bud's Woodwood, and it was tarred and chipped. And then Modena evidently, same outfit must've chipped. Modena's a little hill there, going up to the top with... From the red roof track, from the bottom of the road up to the top, that's Modena. And then that was tarred and chipped also. Yeah, well, you can go, it goes more... Goose Town Road, not Mortonville. This is... And what's called Goose Town Road once you go up into the hill. All right? I do know that what Goose Town Road is. But in reference to that, they tarred and chipped, and we always milled down to the creek. So what we need to do is have it surveyed done. What belongs to East Fall Field and what belongs to South Coastville? Where's the line at? The other place that's a problem is... Is Mortonville. When you get across the Mortonville Bridge, you make a right. That's Newland Road, goes into Newland. Uh, we have New Frontier there. The old mill, New Frontier. You go down past there, there's a little bridge of abutment there. That was what we knew as the township line. Also, the line was between, uh, New Frontier Building and Mo... And the old Sheraton that burnt down. There's a little alley there. That was the dividing line. You can see where... But it was a question about it. Why don't we have a survey and make sure where the lines are? Because as evident, we... We're putting signs up different areas, and we're plowing different areas. So there... Those are the two main things, South Coastville and down here, Mortonville. We should designate where the lines are. Same with the Temple Cool Road. All right? That's one other area that has been questioned. Where do we start? Who... Who has the responsibility of plowing? All right? Just like you go down Hess the Hill. Everything, we... We get paid by the state to plow Hess the Hill. That's going down from here down to Modena. You go down there, that's old Lowry's House. On the right-hand side, Tag knows where it's at, there's a guardrail there. The creek been coming around washing away. It's washing away the road, too. Somebody did throw a little binder down there. I don't know if it was us or the state or who. But that road's... The guardrail's starting to go all the way down there. There's no guardrails falling off because the creek is washing. That's called from the Denison Run, which is starts up where you live. That's where Strunk's property, that's where the Denison Run starts, and it goes down to Modena into the Brandy Line. The other thing I had here, and I... I did talk to Mr. Wilson and all you gentlemen. We're talking, you know, you see about what we have mosquitoes now, people getting diseased and stuff. There's tires, and I've been saying this at meetings. And I'll say, where... Where's that? It's about a quarter mile down from the police station on the right-hand side. All right? You can see all the junk trucks there. That was a residential. That's not it's shot for, uh, fixing track and trailers. Out back there where Jim Durbin lives, there's at least a hundred and some tires there. There's water in them, mosquitoes. That is a residential area. I've been saying that to all of yous for the last two or three months. All right? And it's... It's not up for Buddy Rhodes to go out and take pictures. I do come there, but people come complaining to me, and then I just pass it on because it's... Some of them are afraid to say anything because they don't want another neighbor coming on now, or the police or anything else. That's one reason why a lot of people don't come here, because they... All of a sudden, they say something, the zoning office down there, or the police department. And that's fact. I do know that because I'm one of the persons, but you know, it doesn't matter to me. They keep coming and the zoning offers all they want. But people get intimidated by some people. All right? And that's not gonna happen. And some of the people don't wanna speak up. There's a place on Route... And I just say the person is on council. I'll put it that way. You can't even see her trailer. The weeds are up over top of the trailer. And the police knows about it because there's two young guys living back there. And all I can say is trees growing up through the cars. You couldn't even go in there with a bush hog now. I don't know how you would get in there now, but if it... There's a trailer there, and there's... There's snakes back there, or rats running around, there's nobody taking care of it. All right? That person there told neighbors that the township said it was okay. I'd be glad to take it to the neighbor, but the person that owns the property told the two guys there that the town said it was okay. If that happened in one of your houses, you would be upset. But if Joe Glove don't know that, you know, somebody just... Somebody that was on council telling them, they would take their word for it. They shouldn't. They should come to township and complain with them. They don't wanna rock no book. But I'm... I'm just saying, I go out there, and I know the neighbors out there. And believe me, this is... This is something that shouldn't happen to any neighbor. Especially the tires. Prine's Junkyard. All right? I don't know who owns that, but you see all the tires there. You go up and down eighty-two. That guy's trying to sell the property to the township. All right? There's tires all over there. Now, he has... Don't... Why don't we get rid of the tires? The township got rid of the tires there that was dumped. I don't know what that cost, but you know, that never came up. Maybe that was on the... The budget, but that's something that I would ask one of you supervisor, what did it cost to get rid of the tires that were up at, uh, at our South Coastville dump? It must've been about fifty or sixty tires up there. So it had to cost somebody. So it had to come back to township. And what these people are doing now, all these tires are up in back of their place, how you know they're not dumping them somewhere? But this one particular place that I talked to you, Mr. Lamb, and I talked to you, Ed, and I mentioned at the township meeting about these tires, nothing's been done. Same with the roads. I mean, you know, I know Tag's pushing for Fairview Road, but you can... Just like some other roads we've done here, we did sections. We didn't blacktop the whole road. We did sections. And that's what you... They got a couple bad sections down there, but you don't have to go all the way from Dr. Robertson on the corner, almost where the pipeline is, all the way down there. I realize, once you get down past a Pollo Poinsel House, the road deteriorates more because of the runoff. But you can section that and do binder, or you could a binder ID top. All right? Or you could modify down there. The budget, you know, you already has it. We're gonna have winter. Something evidently from the road he brought and said they need done. All right? There's different roads I brought up going down to Coastville. I see that he went out there and you marked it. It either gonna have to be cut out, jacked out, or take a milling machine down there and mill it. And that's gonna be a... A patch job. You're not going to do the whole road. There's a lot of places that have been done, and it looks nice. You just dig out the bad spots, you blacktop that, and the rest of the road's fine. But we're already over budget on that one Fairview Road. And I'm not... Yeah, it doesn't matter if there's two or three houses that the road's bad, but we got the developments. And I see we're proud of some road up there in West Chester Road. That development's newer than Ed Goldie's. That's one of our newer developments. Ed Goldie's development is one of ours. Durban One, Durban Two, and Durban Three. It must be close to eighty or ninety homes in there. And you go over there, all the roads are cracked on the edges. I'd be glad to take you around. I'd dig you around. So I'll just leave it like that. I mean, you're gonna sit here, and I'm not... You know, Tag's your road foreman or road supervisor or whatever, a public works, I don't know what the... Title is now. But at the same time, the budget and the roads should be looked at, all three, and they make your decision. Yes, he goes around the roads. But there's a lot of inlets up in Goose Town Road. Inlet's about eight or ten inches low. I seen somebody painted it. But you go on up there, the cinder's about a foot and a half high on the right-hand side. So there's quite a few inlets that the water can't get into. And I do have grant numbers in reference to the Creek Road. All right? We're gonna open it up for the bicycles, and maybe that already took place. Did that take place? Well, I see a lot of bikes riding around this weekend. But that road there can be opened up, and there's grant money available. All right? We can open it up just for one, you know, local traffic. We got schools coming up. School buses gotta go all the way around. All right? It can be fixed up to the left, and the drainage can be dug out. I mentioned that, Tag. You put stone in there, and you put binder in there, and let the water come down and get into the inlets. The inlet... Inlets were always covered with leaves and debris. So if the water can't get into the inlets, that means it goes over the road. All right? So you gotta do the little maintenance on the inlets. And that road there, that's one of the reasons why that road there cracked up and we stopped. The supervisors put a stop on the... I think they got up around a hundred thousand, probably? Something like that, eighty to ninety thousand dollars. We had a tractor down there, putting big stone down over the bank. The one section where they stopped is where the road dropped. Because the Brandy Line comes down, and it keep on cutting at the bank. So that's something that the township should address and get that road opened enough. Yeah, they already board the road. We know we got about eight or ten inches of blacktop. And it showed that we didn't... Never had that big of a base underneath there, like four or five inches of three-A modified or two-A modified. But it has a lot of blacktop. We can dig that out, put binder in there, bring that road up a little bit, and open that road up. And also clean up the gutters on the right. There's some work there that you don't have to spend a whole lot of money, a million of dollars. That's what the one bid was, close to a million. Same with Newland. With the road handy, straight up, that you can get local traffic for there. And I know the solicitor's gonna tell you, oh, you're gonna need this, and you're gonna need that there. And then... And in the back, somebody will say, well, how about the safety? You know, how about that safety for the people? You know, be able to get around. And, you know, of course, there's three houses back there, so where he hasn't blocked off, there's new houses. All right? So the three houses can get to their house there. But for a fire engine to get back there, it'll be a little tough. All right?
We were discussing that earlier during the bunch of meetings.
All right? Well, we're talking about safety and welfare of the residents. And one of them is the tires and the road conditions and the developments. And you can do a different type of setup for Fairview Road. I seen marking at the beginning of it, too. I mean, not that not did, but some of these for a power, Durban Church Road, and that's one other road, speed bumps. We got speed bump. We don't have speed bumps and no developments, only on select roads, which others say... No, but I said that. There's only three or four houses on it. And we spent twenty-five thousand dollars for speed bumps, you know, on different roads. Fifteen thousand on one, twenty-some thousand on the other one. There's three or four speed bumps going down the Cover Bridge. There's some on the Durban Church Road that you go over the back level. And there's one other place that has Durban, uh, speed bumps. We spend a lot of money on speed bumps instead of fixing up the roads. And it wasn't done by the road department. I'll just say, the Board of Supervisors, because of the pressure on the select few, asked for speed bump because they said the traffic was too fast. I asked for traffic up where this gentleman here lives. It's thirty-five... I think it's forty miles an hour, and I asked for it for thirty-five. Fairview Road, you change it from thirty... Thirty miles out to twenty-five or fifteen... What is it? Fifteen or twenty-five? Twenty-five? The turbos and rabbits go faster now. People on the bicycles go fast. You can't even get speed sign. The supervisors then no pay for, uh... What's that road you live on?
Misty Patch.
Misty Patch Road. Lot of people go up that way. Lot of them go up South Town Road. We asked the speed limit to get down to thirty-five from forty. They wouldn't move on it. And that's township roads. Strasburg Road, you have to get permission from the state, or Route eighty-two. With township roads, you don't need no permission from Penn Dot. Thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Can I... Can I ask you a quick question, Mike? I mean, you covered a lot of information, but one of the things he mentioned was signs. And I haven't thought about it in a while. At one point, the township was supposed to be mandated to increase the font size on signs.
Well, it's called the... Look. There were... There were new retro reflectivity standards introduced a couple of years ago, and the mandatory aspects of that have been pushed back. But with any new signs, they... They would have to meet, um, the new retro reflectivity. They've gotta be, you know, certain signs font, it can be reflected at night.
Okay, so we're not... Okay, so they did pull that back, we're not responsible?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I remember that.
There's art replacing signs.
Yeah, if we do new signs, we have to use the new standard.
That's the highest. You don't always get this or something.
Sign replacement program.
And, and excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is the second time...
Yeah.
...that I've heard about these tires. So, you know, I... I would hope that somebody would direct the COVID enforcement, Rob, to take a look at this, because that's... That's quality, right?
Yeah.
And... But this is the first, well, informally, the first time that I've heard about it for for Prine's. I've seen him there, but, uh... So maybe he needs to... He needs to go out and specifically look at these two properties.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We can send a note to him to check him out.
I just wanna tell you that, uh, Penn Dot thing is Act eighty-nine. All right? E E C E has a grant for both on an Act eighty-nine. All right? So there's grant money out there, and you just have to vote for it.
So one of the board members will reach out to Rob regarding this stuff?
And who is that going to be?
I will.
Yeah, I'd like to know. Oh, you've... Okay.
I will. All right, interviews for the vacancy board. You go in position open on there, and you have a few people put their name in. I'll just go in order as to what's on here. So, Mr. Nash, can you come up to the mic, please? Good evening. Thank you for coming out and for volunteering to possibly be on this board. I see you also put in for the supervisor vacancy as well, so we appreciate that. So I mean, I guess for the vacancy side, clearly you're okay with one or the other as far as vacancy or supervisor position goes, but you know, uh...
Yeah, I would prefer the supervisor position. But, you know, I just recently retired, and, uh, as you know, you've seen my face here before, I've been starting to come out for all the monthly meetings and stuff like that. And I'd like to be involved in what happens in, uh, you know, this township. I've been a longtime member, forty years or somewhere very close to that. Um, you know, so, I mean, I really don't have a resume. Lisa asked me, I'm retired, so...
Yeah.
All my past jobs are just basically that in the past, you know? But I've... I've had some, um, knowledge of, uh, you know, the excavating and blacktop business as I worked in that business for a little while. And I've just happened to make any difference at this point, but you know what I mean? I'm willing to learn and, and, you know, try to, you know, make the township better.
Right. Okay. Well, since you're on there for the supervisor, too, I guess we'll... We'll go through your supervisor interview. Obviously, the vacancy board is... Do you understand what that is as far as that part goes?
Yes, I believe I do anyhow.
Essentially, and for those who don't know, the vacancy board is a position where, right now, we're in a situation with Mr. Pomorsky having to step down, and we need to fill another supervisor position. If this board cannot come to an agreement within thirty days, then there'll be another ten days?
Fifteen.
Fifteen days for the vacancy board to cast their vote with the board. And if no person gets three votes, then it would go to the Court of Common Pleas. And I don't think there's a timeline on that, is there?
Sixty days, I think.
Yeah, the court acts pretty quick. We're gonna...
So the court act's pretty quick.
It breaks the time.
So, yeah, the vacancy board essentially breaks the tie.
Right.
So, just for all those out there. So from the supervisor position, obviously you want to get more involved. Yeah, I have seen you here at the meetings, which is great. I love public involvement. You know, what do you see, I guess, at this point as the biggest issue facing the township?
Well, it seems lately that roads have been pretty prominent in... In, uh, in the conversation at all the meetings. So, you know, I think that's something that, you know, that, you know, I would also try to address. I have the time. If Buddy, you know, if I were to be elected and Buddy wanted someone to go around with him and see these complaints, I would be more than happy to do that. Or Tag, yeah. I'm not... Well, I just... I just said Buddy because you were the one that had to complain at all and, you know, and the list. But yes, Tag also, you know what I mean?
You have time. Obviously, we've seen you at the meetings, but you're aware we have a workshop, and then we have a monthly meeting. And then there is time needed behind the scenes, like for negotiations and things like that. You have... You obviously have the time. You're stating as being retired.
Yes.
Okay.
And my wife would be more than happy for me to be out of her hair so to speak.
And you're okay to balance the terms about a year and a half left of the former supervisor?
Yes, that's what I understand.
Okay, right.
And then, and at that point, that seat would be basically up for reelection, correct?
Next year, it's up for reelection. Next year, yeah. So, really. Would you be willing to run at that point, or are you just looking to...
Well, yeah, at this point, I don't know if... I don't know if I would, or, you know, you know, I'm looking at going into this position and trying to learn as much as I can, you know, as fastly as possible, you know? Because I've never been in any kind of dealings with, you know, basically local government or whatever. So, you know, I would have to see how the next year and a half went before I would commit to...
That's better.
Anything else. So...
Thank you. Do you have, uh, Wilson, any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue on with the vacancy board. Mr. Zeller, would you like to come up? Thank you to you as well for putting your name in for the vacancy board. We appreciate...
Yeah, I'm Robert Zeller, and I... Gentlemen, nice to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity. During the past year, I have been attending these meetings, so I have an idea of how the board conducts the business. And I... I would say this before I start, that if Mr. Nash is not selected as a supervisor, I would defer to him for the vacancy board. I'm not sure exactly what comes first and so forth. But if Mr. Nash is seriously considered as a supervisor, then I would definitely wish or desire to serve on as a vacancy board. I have submitted a brief resume with regards to my history. And I think that I have sufficient, you know, intelligence and understanding and wisdom to really analyze some of the issues that may come up. And I think you touched on this, that actually, at the present time, the board consists of four individuals. And it's not unusual, perhaps, at some time with some issues, that there could be some deadlock, too for, too against or so. And I would think that's where the... The individual would come into play to really break that deadlock or be a tiebreaker. I think again, with regards to looking at all the details of what the issue is and making that decision, and with the idea of moving forward so that the board isn't hung up on just one issue there and perhaps has to table it, or perhaps come back at a later date. They have other issues they could go on to. So I appreciate your time, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming up this evening as well. We didn't have any last minute for the vacancy, correct? Okay. Board of Supervisor vacancy position, Mr. Sampson, if you're here, please come up. And I should have mentioned it when Mr. Nash was up, but the process for this, we kind of went over with the timeline, but it does have to be a public interview, which is why we're doing it in this forum. Normally, employment matters are closed doors, but...
We're never gonna get that lower down.
I know, right? So just to get all that information out there for everybody that's involved. So, Mr. Sampson, thank you for coming out this evening. Appreciate your interest in the position. Maybe just tell us to start a little bit about why you're looking to help out and come on board for the remainder of this term.
Well, I'm originally from Philadelphia. I've been in a township since about 2010. I don't know very much about the Coachville area, the township area and so forth, but mostly use my GPS to get wherever I need to go. But of course, my wife is from Coachville, so she knows the whole lot. And I rely on her every year for a lot of it. Honestly, I would like to get involved in the township. I would like to help out. I work overnight, so I'm available during the day. I haven't been to a lot of meetings because I'm asleep. I would, again, like to get involved. I have submitted my resume. I do have a lot of management experience. Currently, I'm a dispatcher at Septum. We handle buses, trains, trolley that my district. I have a lot of time during the day. If I need to ride with somebody, I certainly could do that. I've been in management in several different companies. I've worked in health insurance. Currently, I'm in transportation. I've worked in... I have a CDL I can drive. I think I interviewed for one of your past positions.